Thank you and good morning to all. We're gonna get started. Uh, but before we begin the council session, I'm gonna make the following announcement. Due to the continuing threat to public health from COVID-19 and the Delta variant, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and the Legal Intelligence Report prior to the meeting and can also be found on PHL.com. I now note that the hour has come. Clerk will please call a roll to take attendance and members that are in attendance to say a couple of words to make sure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call the work. Mr. Decker?
I think he's having trouble with his, uh, mic- microphone.
Alright, we will quickly adopt another strategy. Um, we're gonna have the temporary clerk. This, this Tate? Wendy?
I'm here CP.
Can you call a roll for us, please? We don't know where Mr. Decker is.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues and the City of Philadelphia. Good morning, everyone.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm present.
Councilmember Tom?
Morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Councilwoman member Gilmore Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm present.
Good morning.
Green?
Um, Council President, good morning colleagues. I am present.
Councilmember?
I, I was skipped.
I don't have my sheet, Councilwoman. I got you. You're coming up. Councilwoman McGimm?
Uh, good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm present.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Good morning, everybody. Present.
Good morning.
Councilmember Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning colleagues and good morning Wendy.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilmember O?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm present.
Councilmember Swilla?
Morning, Council President and colleagues, present.
Councilwoman Maria Sanchez?
Good morning, folks. Good morning. I am present.
Councilmember Thomas?
Good morning, present.
Good morning.
Hello, can you lock that?
I'm sorry, council, I'm missing somebody. Councilmember O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilmember Heenan?
Morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I am present.
Morning.
And Council President Clark?
Good morning and thank you very much Wendy for, um, playing the role of temporary clerk. Uh, Mr. Decker, I see you are now displayed on the screen. Are you connected, sir?
Yeah, I finally got a link, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just wanna note for the record that the Ninth District Councilwoman who represents our Acting Chief Clerk is present today.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I don't know how, how that slipped by, given the awesome, awesome representation that you give for that Ninth District that includes our temporary chief clerk. Okay. So, okay, we're now gonna get started and everybody is in place. We have a staffs to form and we're gonna give our invocation. And to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Edward Brady of Holy Redeemer Hospital. He is here today as a guest of Councilman Neil, O'Neil, I'm sorry. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Father, uh, please proceed and thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you, Council President and all the members of council. And I also wanna give a special thanks to Councilman Brian O'Neil for this honor. We give thanks to our Creator for the many talents bestowed upon our city council and protecting the common good. As they strive to promote your harmony, allow them to achieve consensus in all that they do. May the peaceful example of Mahatma Gandhi, Martin Luther King Jr., Rabbi Regina Jonas and Mother Teresa, whom in which your divine grace and guidance shine, continue to assist us as we strive in our task to build a broader community by seeing and affirming in each other the divine potential, the seed, the Christ, the light within. Amen.
Amen. Father, thank you so much for your invocation this morning. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 18th, 2021. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Swilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of Meeting for Thursday, November 18th, 2021 be approved?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 18th, 2021 be approved. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. And our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you so much. Again, uh, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a issue with respect to the Sunshine Act motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session. Second.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the legislative matter stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Who's opposed? I have it and the motion carries. And our next order of business is communication. And Mr. Decker, please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have and is your resisting.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Chartering, today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Council amendments to bill numbers 210320 and 210321, and bill numbers 210826, 210828, 210829, 210861, 210863, 210865, 210869, 210899, and 210903. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, 2172 East Cambria Street, 2103, 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478, 2480 Emerald Street, 2022 East Fletcher Street, 1929, 1935, 1943, 2215 through 17 East Harold Street, 2637, 2639, 2643, 2645, 2649 Janey Street, 2536 Jasper Street, 2639, 2641, 2643, 2653 Kensington Avenue, 2068 East Mount, Mount Street, 1844 East Oakdale Street, 2140, 2151, 2153, 2156 East Orleans Street, 2646, 2658 Ritter Street, 2089 East Somerset Street, 2106, 2133, 2135, 2250, and 2252 East William Street located in the First Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2148, 2150, 2154, 2156 East Birch Street, 2032 East Lehigh Avenue, 2055, 2057 East Rush Street, 2154, 2155, 2156, 2157, 2158, 2159, 2160, 2161 East Stella Street located in the First Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1739, 2215 South Fifth Street, 1919 South Sixth Street, 2612 South Ninth Street, 411, 418, 424, 432 through 34, 624 and 626 Cantrell Street, 424 and 426 Mercy Street located in the First Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, these conveying title to certain properties located in the First Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2224 Wilder Street and 2715 Annan Street located in the Second Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1932 South, Salford Street located in the Second Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, these conveying title to certain properties located in the Third Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3119 North 35th Street located in the Fourth Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2929 North 13th Street located in the Fifth Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 167 East Lippincott Street, 1922, 1938, 1942, 1944, 1946, 1950, 1952, 1954, 1956 North Third Street, 1923, 1927, 1934, 1935 North Fourth Street, 1925 North Fifth Street, 301, 303, 305, 307, 309, 433, 437, 537 West Park Street, 2004, 2015 North Bodine Street, 4001, 405, 407 West Houston Street, 1851, 1916, 1922, 1936, 1940 North Lea Street, 313, 421 West Norris Street, 1910, 1923, 1926, 1927, 1930, 1931, 1936, 1951, 1952, 1954, 1958, 1961 North Orianna Street located in the Seventh Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 158, 152 through 158 West Logan Street located in the Eighth Councilmatic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Wow. I have shovels in the ground. Thank you, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, uh, we're asking that all resolutions, including purpose resolutions, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. I wanna thank you in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered by the members today.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker introduces on behalf of Council President Clark and ordinance amending chapter 2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Standards of Conduct and Ethics by amending section 2608 into the Public Disclosure and Disqualification to add and modify provisions related to disclosure of financial interest.
Further committee?
Also for Council President Clark, a resolution amending resolution number 200001A which provides for the rules of government of the Council of the City of Philadelphia by providing for rules regarding recusal from any legislation due to conflicts of interest.
Further committee?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution honoring and congratulating Jasmine Sullivan for winning the 2021 BET Soul Train Music Award for Best New Album for her critically acclaimed EP Who Tales?
Next week's calendar.
And, and on her own behalf of resolution recognizing honoring and congratulating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on its 102nd Founder's Day and the upcoming international convention being held in the City of Philadelphia, July 18th through the 24th, 2022.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing honoring and congratulating Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated on its 108th Founder's Day and the upcoming Eastern Region Conference being held in the City of Philadelphia, March 31st through April 3rd, 2022.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and one resolution entitled in ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of North Deckard Street from Callahill Street to Vine Street.
Further committee?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3119 North 35th Street located in the Fourth Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers five resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2224 Wilder Street and 2715 Annan Street. And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1932 South Salford Street. And a resolution honoring American Legion Lincoln Post 89 for its service to the veterans of South Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing hearings by the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to examine diversity and inclusion in contracting by the city and related public sector agencies, including the School District of Philadelphia, Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation.
Today's calendar.
And a resolution recognizing Ryan Boyer, Business Manager of Laborers District Council of Metropolitan Philadelphia and Vicinity for making history as the first African-American business manager of the Philadelphia Building Trades Council.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Sanchez offers a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 167 East Lippincott Street, 1922, 1938, 1942, 1944, 1946, 1950, 1952, 1954, 1956 North Third Street, 1923, 1927, 1934, 1935 North Fourth Street, 1925 North Fifth Street, 301, 303, 305, 307, 309, 433, 437, 533 West Park Street, 2004 and 2015 North Bodine Street, 401, 405, 407 West Houston Street, 1851, 1916, 1922, 1936, 1940 North Lea Street, 313, 421 and 421 West Norris Street, 1910, 1923, 1926, 1927, 1930, 1931, 1936, 1951, 1952, 1954, 1958 and 1961 North Orianna Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Green offers one bill and one resolution. Entitled in ordinance signifying the intention of the City of Philadelphia to organize the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority pursuant to authority established under state law and amending chapters 2600, Standards of Conduct and Ethics, 201200 Lobbying, and 171400 Non-Competitively Bid Contracts Financial Assistance of the Philadelphia Code to address, to address ethics contractual and other requirements applicable to the Philadelphia Public Financial Authority.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, for about the past six years, um, we have been talking about creating the nation's first municipal public bank. Uh, and the bill that I introduced today is a vehicle to get us to that goal. Um, but this bill did not come out, um, in a vacuum and there was a lot of people that participated in helping us to get to this point. Uh, so if you can just give me a few moments, I would like to thank, uh, some of the people that have been engaged in this process, uh, for some time. Uh, we initially started this with a feasibility study, um, working with, uh, the FEL School at University of Pennsylvania as well as Steve Masters, um, Esquire, and also HRNA, a national real estate and consulting firm. Uh, we then, um, worked closely with the Philadelphia Public Bank Coalition. Uh, we met for over a year, uh, and even prior to that, um, but over the past year, we met about every two weeks to get to the point of this bill being introduced. And, you know, a lot of the members of that coalition were very helpful, from the late Dr. Emma Chappelle, uh, founder of United Bank, um, Peter Winslow, Susan Wendell, Stan Shapiro, Vanessa Lowe, Tim Brown, Professor Deb Feigart, Connie Belay, Beth Finn, and Walt McCree of the National Public Banking Institute. Um, then since May, we have been working with outside counsel from Holland and Knight. Uh, we have been meeting, uh, with Holland and Knight and the Law Department and the Treasurer's Office, uh, twice a week since May. So I definitely wanna give a shout out to, uh, the attorneys from Holland and Knight, uh, Cormina, Cormina Williford, Leonard Bernstein, uh, Carol Ward, Charlie Stutes, and then from the Law Department, Renee Garcia, Dan Cantu-Hertzler, Valerie Robinson, Francois Duchy, and then from the Treasurer's Office, Natalia Dominguez and Michael Moore. Uh, in addition, a number of other local, um, executives in this space have helped us in getting to this point from Greg Heller at the Accelerator Fund, uh, Emily Shapiro from the Philadelphia Energy Authority, and Mary Rose Matidis, uh, from the Philadelphia Green Capital Corporation. I also wanna thank, um, my former fellow Meridian intern back in the day, uh, Jody Harris, who's a Philadelphia native, who is now the head of the Community Development Financial Institution, um, office for the U.S. Treasury for giving us guidance, as well as, um, Pennsylvania Banking Secretary Richard vague and his office and his staff and the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development. And then finally, I wanna really give a big shout out to my staff, uh, Frank Einusi and Kyra Harris and my entire staff that really worked with me on, on this legislation and getting us to this point. Now, I started, um, this presentation with the number six. And we've been working on this legislation for about six years to create the nation's first municipal public bank. But when I think about the number six, I also have to think about here in the City of Philadelphia, only 6% of the businesses with employees are owned by African-Americans. Although the African-American population of the City of Philadelphia is about 44%. Only 4% of the businesses with employees in this city are owned by people from the Latinx diaspora. Although the Latinx diaspora is about 15% of the city's population. So when you look at that 6% and 4%, that connects to the issue of our 25% poverty in the City of Philadelphia. And the fact that these businesses are not able to grow and hire more employees is tied to their lack of access to credit. And that's something that the public bank will help to address. But when we also think about the 25% poverty rate, we also need to think about the fact that we've had over 500 homicides in the City of Philadelphia. And the fact that we have such a high poverty rate in our city, I think is one of the key contributing factors of the homicide issues that we have in our city. I thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be referred to committee.
And Councilman Green also offers a resolution recognizing the Community Design Collaborative on the 30th anniversary of its founding.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions. Entitled a resolution calling on Mayor James F. Kenny and his administration of the, of the City of Philadelphia to establish and implement an academic expert advisory team in its selection and evaluation of recipients of the Anti-Violence Community Expansion Grant Program and other anti-violence efforts during fiscal year 2022 and beyond.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this morning on this resolution. Um, I'm introducing this resolution today that calls on the mayor's administration to establish and implement an academic expert advisory team to assist city government with the evaluation of our violence prevention programs and to help ensure our current and future efforts are truly tackling the violence epidemic that plagues our city. I'm sure I speak for every government official, for every community member, and for every resident of this city when I say this violence is gut-wrenching for all of us. To see the highest levels of violence in modern history these past two years is completely unacceptable. Each and every one of these murder victims or shooting victims is a human being, surrounded by family members, friends, neighbors, classmates, and colleagues. This has been a devastating time, to say the very least. And if we believe everyone has an important role to play in curbing this violence, then that certainly includes our academic partners in Philadelphia. City Council initiated and approved a $155 million commitment to the public for the purpose of reducing violence. We owe it to ourselves and to all Philadelphians to ensure that each and every dollar we invest in violence reduction gets the results we need immediately and over the long term. In order to do that, we need to bring in a higher level of expertise in the fields of program evaluation and research. This is a field that government doesn't specialize in, and we must lean into every evidence-based approach to violence prevention at every turn. We initiated, initiated the Violence Prevention Opportunity Monitoring Group, which included some of our academic thought leaders. And we set aside approximately $1.7 million to research and program evaluation. That's a great start, but we must also supplement these efforts with a broader level of academic experts who made a career of program evaluation and can provide great value in helping the city target its resources towards impactful programming and help us monitor the effectiveness of programs over time. This is an opportunity to bring together the greatest minds from our world-class colleges and universities to work with us to provide advice, capture data, and guide us in our review of ongoing research. City government is doing its best with the knowledge and skillset it has, but we're looking to improve on this knowledge and make better decisions moving forward. We need to start investing in evidence-based programs in government and hold ourselves accountable to those standards. As stated in Tuesday's Philadelphia Inquirer editorial, there's no magic solution, but there are ways to assess whether the city's anti-violence approaches are working. This is something we have failed to do for far too long. We need to set a new path forward and invest in programs and people differently than before. We need to tap every resource we can right now. To curb this violence we're experiencing in our communities, we need to enact this program now. For all these reasons, bringing in the experts, the best in the field, is not a suggestion, but an absolute necessity at this point. I wanna thank my co-sponsors today. I thank you for the time to speak today, Council President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Fiscal Stability and Other Governmental Cooperation to hold public hearings to discuss sources of funding, investment priorities, and capital budget planning related to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of 2021.
This week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gaultier offers one bill and one resolution. Entitled in ordinance to approve amendments to the Penn, University of Pennsylvania Master Plan in the area bounded by Walnut Street, 34th Street, Spruce Street, and 40th Street related to the Graduate School of Education building at 3700 Walnut Street.
Next week's calendar. So, Mr. Decker, was there any, I'm sorry.
It was, Mr. President. It was a bill.
Refer to committee.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia redevelopment authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, these conveying title to certain properties located in the Third Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week and Philadelphia Phillies Bryce Harper on capturing his second National League's MVP award and becoming the sixth Philly to win baseball's most prestigious award.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Swilla offers four resolutions. Entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2501, 2855, 2857 Amber Street, 2143, 2155, 2157 East Birch Street, 2134, 2172 East Cambria Street, 2103, 2107 East Cumberland Street, 2107 East Dakota Street, 2478, 2480 Emerald Street, 22, 2022 East Fletcher Street, 1929, 1935, 1943, 2215 through 17 East Harold Street, 2637, 2639, 2643, 2645, 2649 Janey Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2148, 2150, 2154, 2156 East Birch Street, 2032 East Lehigh Avenue, 2055, 2057 East Rush Street, 2154, 2155, 2156, 2157, 2158, 2059, and 2160, and 2161 East Stella Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1739, 2215 South Fifth Street, 1919 South Sixth Street, 2612 South Ninth Street, 411, 418, 424, 432 through 34, 624 and 626 Cantrell Street. 411, 418, 424, 432 through 34, 624, and 626 Cantrell Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank Ds conveying title to certain properties located in the first councilmatic district.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O offers one resolution. Calling for public hearings in Council's Committee on Education to examine the school district's newly proposed admission process for criteria-based middle and high schools.
Today's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and our next order of business is reports on committee. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for report on the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee of the whole reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read their report.
The President, members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the committee of the whole, which is deferred bill number 210680, entitled in ordinance amending section 211203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled appointments to Citizens Police Oversight Commission by revising the qualifications for appointment. Respectfully reports that it's considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bill number 210680.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210680. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, and that will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilmember Johnson for report from the committee on rules.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Rules reports out nine bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read their report.
The Committee on Rules, which is deferred bill number 210683, entitled in ordinance continuing the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, a business improvement district encompassing certain existing and future hotel properties within the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia, and continuing the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District Corporation to serve as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a new plan for the district, including a list of proposed programs and services related to the development and formation of a hotel and tourism industry in the city and county of Philadelphia and their estimated costs. And bill number 210686, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Walnut Street, Ninth Street, Locust Street, and Tenth Street. And bill number 210689, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Old York Road, Brock Street, and Sixth Avenue. And bill number 210744, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Germania Street, Arrangal Avenue, Delaware Avenue, and Linden Avenue. And bill number 210771, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Water Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to act as the city's agent to include and incorporate Philadelphia Water Department-identified green stormwater infrastructure projects in certain construction and improvement projects in and around the city on properties owned by the city, including the prior consent and approval of the district council person where the rebuild project is located. Those projects are rising out of the city's rebuilding community infrastructure or rebuild program and on properties owned by the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. And bill number 210861, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain portions of land located within an area bounded by Burke Street, Memphis Street, Wolf Street, and Tulip Street. And bill number 210863, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Huntington Street, Howard Street, Susswanah Avenue, American Street, Jefferson Street, and Sixth Street. And bill number 210865, entitled in ordinance amending section 14514 of the Philadelphia Code entitled FNE Far Northeast Overlay District to prohibit eligibility for floor area height and dwelling unit bonuses and to increase minimum parking requirements. And bill number 210869, entitled in ordinance amending section 14525 of the Philadelphia Code entitled S&amp;M South Ninth Street Market Overlay District to clarify existing provisions. Respectfully reports that it's considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the nine bills that were just read into the record by the committee.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210683, 210686, 210689, 210744, 210771, 210861, 210863, 210865, and 210869. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Scola for report from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read their report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, which is deferred bill number 210670, entitled in ordinance amending chapter 95100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Food Delivery Services to modify the limitation on fees charged to food service establishments. And bill number 210672, entitled in ordinance amending section 9207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Motor Vehicle Repairs to prohibit the use of city streets for the sale or storage of motor vehicles and revising penalties. And bill number 210917, entitled in ordinance adding a new chapter 95700 entitled leasing of commercial property to require commercial lessors to provide certain disclosures before entering lease agreements and to provide related protections to tenants. Respectfully reports that it's considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of bills number 210670, 210672, and 210917.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210670, 210672, 210917. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Eyes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, which is referred bill number 210924, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Procurement and the Chief Executive Officer of Philadelphia International Airport on behalf of the city of Philadelphia to enter into a concession agreement with KAL Info Solutions Incorporated for the implementation and operation of an airport cargo community system for Philadelphia International Airport. And bill number 210925, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to enter into agreements to purchase electricity, natural gas, and motor fuel for use by the city in city facilities and vehicles, including agreements that obligate payment for delivery of such energy supplies in future fiscal years. Respectfully reports that it's considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of bills number 210924 and 210925.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of bills number 210924 and 210925. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. The bill just reported from committee, which is missing of the rules have been deemed to have had its first reading, and it will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are resolution numbers 210934, 210935, 210936, 210937, 210938, 210939, 210940, 210942, 210943, 210945, 210946, and 210947.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda. Consider the resolution just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. They are numbers 210671A, 210808, 210900, 210584, 210675, 210678, 210679, 210746, 210773, 210774, 210779, 210780, 210781, 210826, 210846, 210847, and 210772.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Councilwoman McGinn, did you want to be recognized after we do the final?
Yes.
Bill? Okay.
Thank you so much, Council President. I'm requesting leave as I have business that takes me out of council and requires me to leave early, and I would like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Let it be noted that Councilwoman McGinn is voting aye on all bills and resolutions. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agendas, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today, and they are numbers 210944, 210901, 210690, 210776, 210798, and 210862. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with the consideration of the public comment, we will now take a brief five to ten minute recess to give our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our speakers. We're going to take a brief break. See you in a minute. And please be aware that the public meeting is being recorded. So because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are consenting to being recorded. Well, now I ask Mr. Decker, please to read the name of the first person on our list today.
Yes, Mr. President. The first speaker we have today is Greg Menace, commenting on two one oh seven seventeen.
Good morning. State your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Uh, good morning. My name is Greg Menace. I am Director of the Strengthening Public Sector Retirement Systems Project at the Pew Charitable Trust, and I appreciate the opportunity today to comment in support of this well-considered legislation, which will build on the progress the city has already made to make their pension system more sustainable. To provide some context, Philadelphia acts as the government sponsor for the city's retirement plans, which administer benefits for retired workers and over twenty-eight thousand current city employees. As of fiscal year twenty twenty, the system had less than fifty percent of the assets on hand to pay for promised benefits, and that's one of the lowest funded ratios among large municipal pension systems in the country. However, it's important to note that this relatively weak fiscal status is more a function of underfunding in decades past, and there is clear evidence that the actions that policymakers have taken in recent years have had a significant impact on improving the fiscal health of the city's pension system. Uh, in fact, in two thousand eighteen, Pew conducted a study in collaboration with the retirement plan and city officials, which demonstrated that the recent reforms would in fact, uh, allow the city pension system to withstand a number of different economic conditions, including a significant recession. So given all that, I think what this legislation does is help the city to continue to build on its existing strong reporting practices, um, and provide policymakers with useful information to consider any range of economic outcomes going forward in order to preserve the retirement security for city workers and to protect the fiscal health of the city's budget. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity again to, uh, contribute to the discussion today and would hap- be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, we appreciate it.
The next speaker is Maurice Sampson, commenting on two one oh nine three four.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Maurice Sampson. The next speaker is Mark Zachary, commenting on two one oh six three three.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, my name is Mark Zachary. I've heard a comment on two one oh six three three. I'm a resident of West Kensington, just north of North Square. Um, and I really support the bill. I just feel like it does not go nearly far enough. Um, there is increased density by lowering the, um, the unit, the, uh, the division for to calculate unit sizes. However, the height limit is only increased by seven feet. In areas like Front Street and American Street where there's so much vacant land and so much room to grow upwards, I really feel like we have the opportunity to create a much higher density, much taller area, and that is a an excellent way to provide affordability via a requirement for affordable housing component of the fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent. Um, this bill's twenty percent, but a twenty-five percent or thirty percent could even be included by going even higher. I really feel like most of the members of council are, for whatever reason, kind of against going higher, and I don't really understand it. And most people who talk, a lot of people who talk about this around the country, uh, would agree with me in that we have transit areas like the L and American Street. We should go as high as we can, not forty-two feet. You know, these buildings next to the L should be much higher than that, and American Street as well. You know, there's been lots of overlays lately, especially in the fifth district, that don't give a density bonus for affordable housing, which is, is honestly, it's inexplicable to me. Um, if people want to move to the one nine one two two and the one nine one three three, this increase of people is going to in- is increasing competition for houses, which is driving the price up. Um, this is, the only way that you're going to be counteracting that is to increase the availability of housing, and you're going to do that by increasing the density and the height of buildings. Um, I would encourage council to have the courage to look into this stuff and tell their constituents who constantly complain about their parking, uh, the height of buildings next to them that if you want affordable housing, one of the best ways to do it is to get taller. You know, that we downzoned Front Street on the west side from Diamond to Lehigh. I just, I can't understand that. You lost seven feet, you lost seventeen feet, and now with this bill, you'll be able to go up seven feet higher. You still lost ten feet. You lost units. You lost possible affordable units, and it it's totally counterproductive to the goals of the city to provide affordable housing. Okay? I guess I have thirty seconds left. And then another thing is, is the T O D, uh, designation isn't even available for Berks, York Dolphins, Huntington, and Somerset, and I I don't even understand why that is. The buildings along Front Street and American should be much higher, and not like, oh, ten feet higher. They should be a hundred feet, hundred and twenty feet. I encourage council to have some vision on affordability and think about this type of stuff. This bill is excellent, but it doesn't go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Maurice Sampson.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good morning. My name is Maurice Sampson. I'm the伸伸伸伸向的Director for Clean Water Action, and I wanted to, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak today in support of resolution two one oh three five, calling on the General Assembly to adopt a package of legislation that would codify the command by the Commonwealth to Environment and Justice. One element of this in particular that gives an example of the importance of this legislation, H B two oh four three, introduced by Representative Boack, would allow D E C to approve permits, um, or to turn down permits based on their cumulative impact the facility is found to add, such pollution, as the impact to health and the quality of life, they'd be in a position to turn it down. This is monumental, and I praise city council for its, uh, its support of this legislation, um, moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Micah Gold Marcell, commenting on two one oh nine three six.
Good morning. Uh, state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Micah Gold Marcell, and I'm speaking in favor of resolution number two one zero nine three six, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson to celebrate the newest phase of Solarize Philly. Solarize Philly has allowed hundreds and hundreds of Philadelphians to go solar using a reputable and high-quality solar installation company, of which SolarStates was one of the companies selected. It has put the city of Philadelphia on the map in terms of being in the forefront of renewable energy for the city, but also for low-income Philadelphians through the Low to Middle Income Solar Program, where we recently installed over fifty solar arrays for low-to-middle-income Philadelphians. This would not have been possible without the partnership, uh, with the Philadelphia Energy Authority and leadership coming from city council. So I'm here today to say we need to celebrate Solarize Philly as a major success, not just in putting us on the map for solar renewable energy in the city of Philadelphia, but also for creating jobs for inner-city Philadelphians. Our mission is to be the on-ramp to the green-collar economy for inner-city Philadelphians, and over the last six years, we have grown from a very small company of just a few people to forty full-time employees. We are located here in the city of Philadelphia, and this is a big win. We need to keep Solarize moving forward and also consider how to keep good solar policy, uh, on the books here in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Katie Bartlata, commenting on two one oh nine three six.
Good morning. I'll state your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
My name is Katie Bartalota. Good morning, President Clark and members of city council. Speaking today on behalf of the Philadelphia Energy Authority, also known as P E A, in support of resolution number two one zero nine three six, celebrating the expansion of solar energy offerings through our Solarize Philly program. P E A is a city government entity building a robust equitable clean energy economy for Philadelphia. In twenty sixteen, with the leadership of Council President Clark, we launched the Philadelphia Energy Campaign, and since then, we've supported over one hundred seventy million dollars in energy efficiency and clean energy projects and have helped create over seventeen hundred jobs. As part of the energy campaign, P E A launched Solarize Philly in twenty seventeen as a group discount program to support home and business owners to install rooftop solar at a reduced price with consumer protection. As Micah just mentioned in his testimony, as of twenty twenty-one, over seven hundred fifty households from across the city have gone solar through Solarize Philly, making it the largest program in the nation, and for every one hundred installs, the program creates fifteen jobs. To further the goal that all Philadelphians can enjoy clean energy, affordable local energy sources, Solarize Philly has expanded its offerings in phase five, which is currently underway, to ensure that homeowners of all income levels can opt to go solar with a no-money-down lease option and no minimum credit score. So far in phase five, twelve hundred households have signed up for the program and thirty-three new contracts have been signed. We thank our installers at SolarStates, Superior Solar Design, and Posigen for helping us to deliver affordable and accessible clean energy to homeowners while creating jobs. Recognition like this resolution, sponsored by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, helps spread the word of the program's success and the new opportunities for Philadelphians to go solar. We appreciate your consideration and hope you all will support the adoption of this important resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Kelly Gasly, commenting on two one oh six seven one A.
Good morning. State your name for the record and please proceed with your testimony.
Kelly Gasly. The next speaker, Mr. President, is Michael Frolic, Esquire.
Thank you. Uh, good morning. Uh, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Michael Frolic.
Yes, this is Michael Frolic. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you now. This, um,
Very good. Thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, my name is Michael Frolic. I'm the managing attorney of the Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit at Community Legal Services, and on behalf of our low-income clients, I am very pleased to testify in support of bill number two one zero six seven one A. This is Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's bill requiring funeral homes to share information about probating estates and avoiding tangled titles. As we all know, uh, very well, thousands of people in Pennsylvania face barriers to achieving homeownership because they have what has been coined as a tangled title. This summer, Pew Charitable Trust identified at least ten thousand four hundred homes with tangled titles, which affect two percent of all residential properties that are collectively worth one point one billion dollars in family wealth. The report also found that tangled titles are concentrated in neighborhoods with high rates of poverty and higher black populations. Tangled titles can prevent families from obtaining needed repairs, paying a mortgage, fully resolving property tax debt, and most importantly, building intergenerational wealth and closing the racial wealth gap. For the last two years, with support from council and D H C D, Community Legal Services has been able to increase our representation of homeowners to address tangled titles, and we look forward to doing more with support from the N P I bond. But the process to untangle tangled titles is laborious, it's painstaking, and it's very time-intensive, and it only gets more difficult the longer a family waits to deal with the problem. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's bill is a smart solution to get ahead of these issues. Under this bill, funeral homes would provide critical information about how to deal with titles to homes when a loved one passes. Funeral homes are expert in helping families navigate a highly emotional and complex situation, and because funerals are often a time when families convene, it can be the best time to confer as a family about what to do with the family home, obtain signatures, and make a plan going forward. I wanted to close by recognizing the tireless work of Register of Wills Tracy Gordon for elevating this issue with her campaign to Plan, Prepare, Protect, and on behalf of C L S's low-income clients, thank you to the bill's sponsor, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, uh, my own, uh, uh, the West Philly Councilmember, Jamie Gaultier, and all of council for your support in addressing tangled titles. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Irvina White, commenting on two one oh six seven one A.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just proceed with your testimony and state your name for the record.
Irvina White Buford. Good morning to the president and members of city council. I'm Irvina White Buford, a licensed funeral director in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and owner of Irvina White Buford Funeral Services in Philadelphia and Pottstown, Pennsylvania. Thank you for this brief opportunity to publicly voice my support of bill two ten six seven one A. When making funeral arrangements, I often spend so much time trying to answer questions about estate issues such as probate, short certificates, bank accounts, assets to include property and deeds. It would be awesome if I could provide families with an informational sheet about many of these issues, especially property, in the name of the deceased to prevent tangled titles. Bill number two ten six seven one A will be a valuable tool for me as I have the information sheet at hand to give to these families and to spend less time trying to give brief lessons on estate issues. I would even love to share this information on my website to educate Philadelphians. The Funeral Home Arrangement Conference Meeting is a piece of this puzzle to help reduce the risk of wealth building, property deterioration, property theft, and foreclosure in our communities. Thank you to Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson and the Honorable Tracy L. Gordon for working so hard on trying to bring a solution to prevent tangled title issues. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Kelly Gasly, commenting on two one oh six seven one A.
Good morning.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Kelly Gasly. I'm the managing attorney at Philadelphia V I P, and I appreciate the opportunity to testify today in support of bill number two one zero six seven one A. Thank you to Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for introducing this bill, which would require funeral service providers to provide vital information on tangled title issues to families upon the death of their loved one. As we know, tangled title affects over ten thousand homes in Philadelphia and homeowners of color in particular. At V I P, we match our volunteer attorneys with over one hundred clients experiencing a tangled title issue every year, so we're very familiar with this problem and how long it can take to resolve. There are three ways to tackle tangled title issues. By preventing it through estate planning, by resolving tangled title cases once they arise, and through educating the public and raising awareness in our community about the importance of addressing tangled title issues promptly, and that's exactly what this bill does. Time is not on our side in tangled title issues. Every month and year that passes after a homeowner dies, it becomes more complicated and less feasible to sort out who will take title to their home. Most of our clients at V I P have been in their tangled title situation for years and only get into us once a crisis is at hand. Bill number two one zero six seven one A is an important step in proactively educating our community on tangled title and urging loved ones to deal with it when it occurs, rather than years later when it will be far more challenging to unravel. I know that this particular issue is very close to the Councilmember's heart, and I really appreciate her pushing this forward with this wonderful proactive measure to try to prevent tangled title issues. We remain committed at V I P to working with city council, the Department of Records, and the Register of Wills to implement this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment session. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. We now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on our consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, you please read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution Number 210934 entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the FAVIA redevelopment authority dees conveying fee simple title to 26, 2316 through 50 North 11th Street, 1414 North 27th Street, 1426 North 27th Street, 1428 North 27th Street, 1430, 14, and 1432 North 27th Street, 1511, 1513, 1521, 1523, 15, and 1525 North 28th Street, 1,009 through 11 Dolphin Street, 2705 Jefferson Street, 2815 Jefferson Street, 1532 North Marston Street, 1559 North Marston Street, 1561 North Marston Street, 1335 North 8th Street, 2929 North 13th Street, 929 North 30th Street, 931 North 30th Street, 1755 North 31st Street, 2700 West George Street, 2713 West George Street, 914 North Taney Street, 916 North Taney Street, 920 North Taney, 920 North 27th Street, 922 North 27th Street, 1213 North 27th Street, 1217 North 27th Street, 1225 North 29th Street, 1240 North Dover Street, 857 North 20th Street, 854 North Uber Street, 28, 858 North Uber Street, 860 North Uber Street, 862 North Uber Street, 854 Field Street, 856 Field Street, 858 Field Street, 860 Field Street, 667 North 11th Street, 607 North 12th Street, 77 Master Street, and 809 First Street in the 5th Councilmatic District. And Resolution Number 210935 entitled a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt House Bills 2034 and 2043, House Resolution 151, Senate Resolution 201, and Senate Bill 189, and thanking Governor Tom Wolf, Representative Donna Bullock, Representative Malcolm Kenyatta, Representative Chris Ratt, and Senator Vincent Hughes for their commitment to addressing environmental justice in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Resolution Number 210936. It's titled a resolution celebrating the expansion of solar energy offerings through Philadelphia Energy Authority's Solarize Philly Program, and Resolution Number 210937. It's titled a resolution also naming the 5,700 block of West Master Street as David Fatah Way in honor of David Fatah to commemorate his legacy as the co-founder of the Hasu Bu Moja, as well as his community and youth leadership in the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210938 entitled a resolution also naming the 1,400 block of North Fraser Street as Queen Mother Falaka Fatah Way, another of Falaka Fatah, to commemorate her legacy as co-founder of the Hasu Bu Moja and her leadership in mentoring over 3,000 African-American youth in her lifetime. And Resolution Number 210939 entitled a resolution recognizing Annette John Hall on the occasion of her retirement from journalism after a distinguished and celebrated career. And Resolution Number 210940 entitled a resolution urging the U.S. Congress to pass House Resolution 5768, the Violent Incident Clearance and Technological Investigative Methods Victim Act, which would provide $1 billion in federal funding over the next 10 years to help local and state police raise their clearance rates for both fatal and non-fatal shootings. And Resolution Number 210942 entitled a resolution congratulating David L. Cohen on his confirmation as United States Ambassador to Canada and recognizing his many contributions to public life and service in Philadelphia and beyond. Resolution Number 210943 entitled a resolution honoring 6ABC Action News Jim Gardner upon his upcoming retirement and recognizing his years of service to the people of Philadelphia and the region to whom he delivered urgent news and information every day since 1976. And Resolution Number 210945 entitled a resolution honoring the legacy of Champion of the Week, Norm Evenson, for an inspiring life and recruiting career of more than 40 years, scouting the best young basketball players all across Pennsylvania, New York, DC, and Baltimore as a middle Atlantic recruiter. And Resolution Number 210946 entitled a resolution recognizing the 88th anniversary of the Ukrainian genocide of 1932 through 1933. And Resolution Number 210947 entitled a resolution proclaiming November 24, 2021 as Pierre-Roubert Day in Philadelphia in commemoration of his 40th anniversary at 933 WMMR.
You unmute the President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda. Second.
Thank you. It is moved as second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We would now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 210671A entitled an ordinance demanding Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter requiring certain businesses or professions provide disclosures regarding tangled titles. And Bill Number 210808 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Oxford Avenue, Schelmeyer Avenue, Rising Sun Avenue, Extended, Solly Avenue Extended, the County Line, Borbeck Avenue, Hasbrook Avenue, and Hartell Avenue. And Bill Number 210900 entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the General Fund from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Grants Revenue Fund from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Aviation Fund from certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Aviation Fund to certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. And Bill Number 210584 entitled an ordinance establishing no-truck parking regulations in the vicinity of Wackaco Street and Oregon Avenue. And Bill Number 210675 entitled an ordinance demanding Section 122809 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Civil Penalties and Costs to Change Certain Penalties for Parking on Sidewalks. And Bill Number 210678 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Allen's Lane and West Haken Avenue. And Bill Number 210679 entitled an ordinance demanding Section 9203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Street Vendors by permitting vending on certain sections of 49th Street. And Bill Number 210746 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Wildy Street and Hancock Street, Wildy Street and Marlboro Street, Salmon Street and Columbia Avenue, Montgomery Avenue and Wildy Street. And Bill Number 210773 entitled an ordinance establishing parking restrictions for certain commercial vehicles in the vicinity of Bluegrass Road and Grant Avenue, Decatur Street and Torresdale Avenue, Common Avenue and Milner Street, Bernard Avenue and St. Vincent Street, Battersby Street and St. Vincent Street, St. Vincent Street and Roosevelt Boulevard, Wellington Street and Battersby Street, Brighton Street and Brew's Avenue, Princeton Avenue and Brew's Avenue, Friendship Street and Hawthorne Street, Tulip Street and Decatur Street, Aston Road and Grant Avenue, and Home Avenue and Roosevelt Boulevard. And Bill Number 210774 entitled an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner to enter into a contract for the construction of a water main and apartment work required to provide public water service in the 4,000 block of Wells Street and the 6,600 block of Charles Street. And Bill Number 210779 entitled an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk plaque in the vicinity of 447 North Broad Street. And Bill Number 210780 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Clarion Street and Breed Street, Clarion Street and Wharton Street, Manton Street and South A Street, Wilder Street and South 12th Street, Franklin Street and Tasker Street, Marshall Street to Wharton Street. And Bill Number 210781 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Franklin Street and Retner Street, South 10th Street and Mifflin Street, Mifflin Street and South 9th Street, Dudley Street and South 10th Street, McKean Street and South 9th Street. And Bill Number 210826 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades of a portion of City Plan Number 230 by striking from the City Plan Crescent Street from Osborne Street to Bassett Street and reserving a placing on the City Plan of right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes within a portion of Crescent Street being stricken. And Bill Number 210846 entitled an ordinance establishing parking restrictions for certain commercial vehicles in the vicinity of Tulip Street and Robin Street and Longshore Avenue with New State Road. And Bill Number 210847 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Winfield Avenue from 52nd Street to 54th Street both sides, 54th Street from Winfield Avenue to Gainer Road both sides, George's Lane from Winfield Avenue to Gainer Road both sides. And Bill Number 210772 entitled an ordinance demanding Title 22 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Employees Retirement Code by codifying the pension board's pre-existing policy and practice to perform an annual stress test on the retirement system in accordance with industry standards, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. These bills haven't been read on two, two different days. The question for each bill now is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker shall call the roll, and upon, oops, upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills and nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Dom?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Green?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye on all bills. Councilman Heenan?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye on all bills.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Scola?
Aye on all bills.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Council President Clark?
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted in affirm to for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passes calendar. And Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of Resolution Number 210944?
A resolution recognizing and determining that Bill Number 210778A remains under active consideration by this council.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier for motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Council President, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Yeah, just have a point of information. If Councilman Gaultier could just explain on the record the pending ordinance doctrine for colleagues.
Sure. So the pending ordinance doctrine, as best I can explain it, says that when zoning legislation comes out of rules that the city will basically treat it as law. And so we're extending the time period on which this bill would be treated as, as a law by the city.
And just one further point of clarification, the bill that you're referring to is which one?
Um, 210633, I believe. It's the townhomes legislation.
46. Market Street?
Um, the overlay, sorry, 210778, I'm sorry, the overlay around the 40th and Market area.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Gaultier and Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, okay, so Councilwoman, just do the motion again.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
They're moving probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210901.
An ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, and the Water Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez for an amendment to Bill Number 210901.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 210901. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move forward for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and Bill Number 210901 has been amended. Bill Number 210901 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar for our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210690.
An ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Bryant Street from West Mount Pleasant Avenue to Allen's Lane northbound.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, ayes of 17 and ayes of 0. Majority of all members present having voted in affirm to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210776.
An ordinance demanding Chapter 9200 of Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Commercial Activities on Streets to add a new section entitled Streeteries to allow for expansion of business uses, including outdoor dining in portions of the public right-of-way, such as at certain curbside parking locations.
Thank you. This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kinnon Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Scola?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, ayes of 17 and ayes of 0. Majority of all members having voted in affirm to the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210798.
An ordinance demanding Bill Number 200351 entitled an ordinance authorizing the operation of sidewalk cafes during the COVID-19 emergency until December 31, 2020, in areas of the city where such activity currently must be otherwise authorized by special ordinance and allowing expanded activity by currently licensed sidewalk cafe operations as amended by Bill Number 200497. To further extend the date, Bill Number 200351 will remain in effect.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm is voting aye. Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilman Scola.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of all members voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of bill number two one zero eight sixty-two.
An ordinance submitting Section Seventeen One Eleven entitled Energy Efficiency and Environmental Design and Construction of Buildings to update requirements and make like changes.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for an amendment to bill number two one zero eight sixty-two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like I would like to offer an amendment to bill number two one zero eight six two. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council, and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, bill number two one zero eight sixty-two has been amended, and bill number two one zero eight sixty-two as amended will be placed on a final passes calendar for our next session of council. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing hearings by the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to examine diversity and inclusion in contracting by the city and related public sector agencies, including the school district of Philadelphia, the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Been moved and probably second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed.
And Council President.
Yeah, Chair recognizes.
I just wanted to note, thank you, I just want to note for the record, want to acknowledge the hard work of my colleagues, Councilman Derek Green, as well as Councilman Isaiah Thomas around this particular issue. There was a recent report that just highlighted how in the city of Philadelphia, we're forty-four percent African American, but yet we receive less than ten percent of city contracts. And so that's the purpose of us highlighting and addressing this particular issue. If we want to talk about economic, institutional, systematic racism, it has to start with us. So, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. We just called for motion, and I believe it was second, all in favor, indicates by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Fiscal Stability and Intergovernmental Cooperation to hold public hearings to discuss sources of funding, investment priorities, and capital budget planning related to the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of two thousand twenty-one, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President, move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
A resolution calling for public hearings in Council's Committee on Education to examine the school district's newly proposed admission process for criteria-based middle and high schools, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of my colleagues, Councilmembers Bass, Scola, Gilmore, Richardson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been seconded.
Second.
Probably second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And now, prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for that particular purpose. With that said, speeches on behalf of the minority, uh, don't see any requests, speakers on behalf of the majority, don't see any requests from, uh, on the majority, oh man, what's going on? Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, thank you very much, and there are no speeches on behalf of the minority on the majority. It was that.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, you check now, Mr. President, we have members Gilmore, Richardson, and Adam.
All right, I'm just sitting here waiting for, okay.
I know, not so fast, CP.
Okay, look, I was trying to delay, uh, here we go. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, uh, thank you so much, Council President, and I just wanted to to quickly thank you, Council President, and all of my colleagues on Philadelphia City Council for your support and all those who provided a public comment and public testimony in support of bill number two one zero six seven one A, uh, which will require that families receive certain information regarding how to probate in a state and prevent a tangled title here in the city of Philadelphia. So, to Michael Frolic, Kelly Gasly, Irvina White Buford, my sister of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, and also funeral homeowner, I thank you all so much for your support. As all of you know, colleagues, and I know at some point I've probably mentioned this to you at some point in our journey, this issue of addressing tangled titles in the city of Philadelphia is very important to me, not only because it addresses housing affordability, because we know the most affordable home you can have is the one you already reside in, but it addresses generational wealth, it addresses generational legacy, and ensuring that we can have overall health and well-being in our communities here in the city of Philadelphia. This issue is also deeply personal to me. As you all know, on the first council session of the last term, that was the last time I held my mother's hand, and she passed away in our home that I grew up in in Winfield. And eight months before that, my grandmother passed away, and a little bit before that, my father passed away. So, my sister and I were left with a very precarious situation, Council President, of having to resolve estates for some individuals who did not have wills, who were not prepared for that part of life. You know, your parents prepare you for everything, but for the moment when they are no longer with us. And over the next several years, my sister and I went through a very long and arduous journey to ensure that we could grant my mother's dying wish. And her wish on her deathbed to me was Kathy, no matter what you do, please save the house. And my, your father and I, we worked very, very hard for you and your sister, we always had two jobs, we did the best that we could for you, and this is all that we have to leave to you. And what they left to us was a lot, and both, and they had mortgages, the homes had mortgages. It was a mess, to be honest, and we had a lot of work to do, a lot of money to save. And not every family in the city of Philadelphia is fortunate enough to be in the predicament that I am in, to be able to help not only my family, but my sister's family, and maintain their housing here in the city of Philadelphia. So, ensuring that we are addressing tangled titles and deeds for the more than ten thousand families that are suffering across the city is one of the most monumental things we can do in the housing arena for individuals here in the city of Philadelphia. So, I wanted to pause and say thank you to each and every one of my colleagues, to all the advocates, to our Madam Register Tracy Gordon, our Records Commissioner James Leonard, and each and every one of you who are working on this issue. CP for MPI, you took every call, you listened to every message that I left for you regarding this issue, and made a substantial investment in ensuring that we could resolve tangled titles and deeds for families with seven point six million dollars over the next four years, one point nine million dollars each year, which triples the investment that we were typically spending on this issue. So, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do to ensure that you uplift the issues that you know are important to us, but to the people that we serve, and to the ten thousand families out there, we want to help you and ensure that you too can maintain your generational legacy and your generational wealth. Thank you, colleagues, thank you to all the advocates, to all the partners, and to each and every one of you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you for your hard work and your aggressive approach to solving people's problems, we really appreciate, appreciate you. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I also want to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Kathy Gilmore Richardson, this is great legislation, and really, to me, this is a win-win for everybody, and great job, well done. I also wanted to acknowledge the passing of Bruce Kaufman. Bruce Kaufman, who was eighty-six, passed away this past Monday. He was a retired judge at the U.S. District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, a former justice for the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania, and a longtime Philadelphia attorney. Judge Kaufman served in the federal district court from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand nine, and was a justice for the Supreme Court from nineteen eighty-eighty-two. In nineteen sixty, he started his practice as an attorney. He became partner and chairman, and was over a forty-year career at the law firm of Delworth, Paxton, Kalish, and Kaufman. He also taught at the University of Pennsylvania Law School, and most recently was co-chair of the Executive Committee at Elliott Greenleaf Law Firm. One of the best quotes that I pulled today from the inquiry obituary, and I knew Bruce for forty years, was his optimism, intellect, and preference for resolution over rancor. He usually sought common ground as an attorney and judge, evil and disagreements ran deep. And that was my biggest takeaway. And I will say this, as I am aging myself, I'm seeing more and more friends and people I know sadly pass away, and I just wish good health for everybody, I just want to recognize Judge Kaufman was really a Philadelphia icon. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I believe that is it for today, my speeches. And with that, I would like to recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting today at two o'clock to discuss bill number two one zero nine twenty-three, two o'clock. And with that, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at ten a.m.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and seconded at the council stand adjourned until Thursday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-one, ten a.m. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carried, thank you all very much.